Hello, I would like to welcome everyone to the Cumberland School Committee meeting on January 11th, 2018 at 7:11 PM. I'd ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I'd like to just observe a moment of silence for Mr. Robert Draper, who passed away right before Christmas. He was a past principal in Cumberland and just like to observe this moment to thank him for all he's done for these schools in the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Goggins. Next item on the agenda, the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve the approval of the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hess and Mrs. Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. I also would like to mention that Mr. Fiorello is absent from tonight's meeting. Minutes reflect that. Next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report. Do we have anyone here representing student government? Seeing none, we'll skip this item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, 12:14, 2017. Approval of minutes for executive session, 12:14, 2017. The Enrollment Report of 1-1, 2018. The School Police Report of 12:1, 2017. And the Residence Truancy Report of 1-1, 2018. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion.
Mr. Demodica and Mrs. Goggins make a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a Report out of Executive Session Meeting. Report out of Executive Session Meeting on 1/11/2018, which was this evening. Report out of Executive Session Vote. There were not any votes, but there was a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggins. All in favor? Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. There are a few items that I would like to add to my Superintendent's Report, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. And one of them is to recognize a person who is retiring, and she's actually here in the audience. So if you could just join me very quickly, Mr. Chairman, so we can go down to the podium.
Kathy, if you would, please. Okay. All right, everyone. This is Kathy Lambert, and I'm sure that you know her. I'm sure that some of your children have actually had her as a teacher.
Kathy was hired in Cumberland in 1996 as an inclusion teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. Is that accurate? In 2003, she was a grade-one teacher at BF Norton School. In 2004, she was a grade-two teacher at Community. And in 2007, to the present, she has been a kindergarten teacher at Community Elementary School. One of the things that I've learned about Kathy since I have been working in the Cumberland school system is that she's not shy about expressing her opinion about things, and I mean that in a positive way. So, and for those of you who know Kathy, know that she's also very active at Franklin Farms and in a number of wonderful things that they do there for the Cumberland community. So, I have this certificate that I would like to present to you on behalf of the school committee. This is retirement recognition. The Cumberland School Department presents Certificate of Excellence to Katherine Lambert in recognition and sincere appreciation for your invaluable contribution throughout your many years of service to the students, parents, faculty, staff, and administrators of the Cumberland School Department. Kathy, thank you so much for your years of service, and good luck. Congratulations.
For the record, that first year at North Cumberland, I was a kindergarten teacher at North Cumberland, because we had kindergarten there because the buildings were under construction. And I had the pleasure of co-teaching with Jim Field. What a year. What a year. And our teacher assistant was Joan Spate, who had 20 years of experience teaching preschoolers in Cumberland. Jim Field, who had, he's right out of college, he had enthusiasm and energy off the charts. And they had me, a new hire in her 40s, who had raised three kids, who kind of like knew the other angle. So the three of us were such a team, it was just wonderful. And then I spent my formative years at BF Norton teaching kindergarten. That was my dream job. It was just, and that's where I did so much powerful professional development with that team. And then I was involuntarily transferred to first grade, involuntarily transferred to second. And then my heart came back with me to kindergarten, where I've been ever since. And I just want to say, the big picture, and starting with NCLB, it all came down to measurable attributes. Everybody wants kids to achieve what's measurable, and I just want to speak on behalf of the things that cannot be measured. The soft skills, the social-emotional components, the things that make students into human beings, into collaborators, problem solvers. And that doesn't happen by filling out forms and studying for the test or whatever. So, I loved investigations. It was designed for the way little kids learn, and I love the new curriculum that the Department of Ed is doing in kindergartens in the state. It's designed for the way kids learn, and I'm so happy to see that come into the district. And if you value what I'm about, I'm here, as a consultant, as a sub, as a volunteer, whatever. I just, I love teaching. I just don't want to deliver a curriculum. Thank you.
So, as I mentioned, just two other things, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
One of the things that I just wanted to share with the school committee, and actually I wanted to share with the public, was the process that we go through to make a determination about whether or not we should cancel school. As a result of, usually it's in relation to a weather event, and it really is, I would say, a highly involved process. And with a weather incident like we had last week, we knew well in advance that we were going to have potentially a significant amount of snow. And it was an opportunity for us to plan accordingly. And in fact, because we knew that it was going to be, you know, a serious snowstorm with, you know, a significant volume of snow with heavy winds, that there was potentially some real problems there for schools and families and folks in their homes and in their towns. One of the biggest concerns in a situation like that is losing electricity. So, days before an event like that, we start having conversations in district. The central office staff meets regularly to track the weather and start to make plans to deal with, in this particular case, the snow. And we also had to pay attention to the cold, because as you all know, we had several days of cold weather, which I believe presented more of a problem than just the snow. Of course, the snow is an issue, but the freezing temperatures over that extended period of time really contributed to the problem. So, when, you know, when we're expecting snow, like we had last week, we start, we meaning superintendents, start to have conversations with one another. I would guess that there are at least eight to 10 of us, especially in the northern area, that stay in constant communication and decisions about, you know, not only, you know, the potential cancellation of school, but after-school activities. You know, we have conversations about when we're going to do it. A lot of those decisions are done right around the same time. So, as you may recall, most of the cancellations were done right around the same time. Like, we wanted to make the cancellation on Wednesday afternoon, as close to the news cycle as possible, so that families could make arrangements accordingly. Also, in constant communication with the mayor, we have several conversations. Chief Damaris is also involved. I've had conversations with Frank Stoick. Frank, as you know, is involved with the Highway Department. And we, as, you know, all hours of the day and night, I mean, I'm talking, you know, 4:00, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning, you know, Mike Chandler, Alex, Will, DeJesus, we are in Tina Fogel. We are in constant communication. And I'm also in communication with members of the school committee as well. So, the point that I wanted to make is that there is a tremendous amount of time and effort and thought that goes into, you know, making the decision. So, it's not only making a decision about whether or not we're going to cancel school, but it's also, we also have many conversations about what we're going to do to make sure that we have staff in here to clear the grounds, so that they're safe for when everyone returns. And the timing of storms, you know, is always an issue as well. So, and, you know, contractual issues come into play. So, the point is that there is a lot that goes into making these decisions. And I know that many of you already know that, but I just wanted to share that. And I know that members of the public are not always, nor should they, understand all of the, you know, the thinking and coordination and planning that goes on in preparation for a weather event like this. One of the most important things, it seems to me, that we can do is make a decision in such a way that parents can plan accordingly. So, just wanted to mention that. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. But I will say this, I mean, based on my observation and experience, I think everyone works well together. In fact, because we knew that this last storm was going to be a big one, with heavy snow and accumulation and significant wind, the mayor called a meeting at the police station, where all of the different departments were represented to plan together. So, there is a lot that goes into it. Again, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that.
Anyone?
So, I just have one more thing that I wanted to share with all of you, and I'm actually glad I thought of this. I'm sure that, in fact, I know that members of the school committee are well aware of this, because you all have been hearing and seeing and getting communication from parents and others about this whole issue of vaping. And, you know, vaping is essentially an electronic cigarette, and there is a growing number of students who are found to be in possession of and involved in this vaping thing, which seems to be, you know, just increasing at an incredible rate across the country. And there are lots of misconceptions about vaping, one of which is that people seem to think that vaping is not harmful to a person's health, and in fact, there is a wealth of evidence to suggest otherwise. And we learned that the folks who are involved in selling anything related to vaping products, whether it's the gels or the actual tools that are used to do the vaping, they are, you know, they are making it really attractive to students, to young people. In fact, Scott Carpenter and I did a Bob Talk yesterday, and it's, our goal is to get the Bob Talk out on Sunday, so that we can not only provide information to parents about what they're seeing at an increasingly rapid rate at the high school, but we're also having a town hall meeting on the 16th, I don't know what day that is, Tuesday, the 16th, at 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. And the reason, and I respect the high school for doing this, the reason that they're doing it is because they are seeing such an increase. And so, there are, so, I mean, you know, there are different things that are being vaped, you know, nicotine, other controlled substances as well. And the thing, I think, just from my perspective as a former health educator, and certainly as the superintendent, my concern is that students, you know, our students, not just Cumberland students, but students all across the country, are doing this, and their parents don't know that they're doing it, because they don't know what to look for. So, one of the things that we're going to talk about at the town hall meeting is something called Hidden in Plain Sight, and that's one of the things that we talked about in the Bob Talk, is the things that students are doing to hide their use of these instruments that allow them to vape. So, this is a growing problem, and, you know, kudos to the high school for acknowledging that they, or they feel that they have a responsibility to inform the public and parents. And this, by the way, is not just a high school issue. This is also, there's also evidence to suggest that it's happening at the middle level. And again, I can't, and having been a former high school principal and assistant principal and health educator, I'm concerned that, as I mentioned before, but it's worth repeating, that students are doing these harmful things, and parents, and I don't say this to be disrespectful, but their parents have no idea that they're doing them. So, I hope that we get some folks to show up on Tuesday at this town hall meeting. I also hope that we can, this is not just a high school thing, I hope that we can get some parents from the middle schools to attend as well. So, not only are we hoping to get the Bob Talk out by, hopefully, Sunday evening, is our goal, but we'll also send out, I'll send out an announcement from my office to remind everyone that we're going to be doing this. So, anyway, I just thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for indulging me and allowing me to share that, but I just thought it was important to let everyone know, so thank you, sir.
Superintendent Mitchell, very excellent update. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Chairperson's Report, Fiscal Year 2018 Budget Update. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Denon.
Mr. Mitchell, so the agenda was updated on snow removal at the schools, is there any, well...
You know what, I think, we can certainly talk about that, but I just, I wanted to talk more about the process than the removal of snow. So, just, and since you brought that up, when school was canceled on Thursday, and we started the snow removal process on Thursday, school was canceled on Friday, and, but 12-month employees were required to report to work, Alex, Will, and I traveled to all eight of the schools to assess how cleanup was going. And, you know, there was so much snow, and there was wind. So, not only did they have to, they removed the snow once, they also had to go back to several locations, because the wind was blowing snow back to where they had already cleared. So, I think they did a great job. And again, to me, not only was there a lot of snow, but the cold made it really difficult to totally clear all of the driveways and the parking lots and the sidewalks. So, and, one of the concerns that some of us have talked about was the fact that not only were we concerned about, you know, sidewalks leading up to and into the school, but the sidewalks in the community. And, you know, it's sort of a concern, like, you know, where my office is located, I can watch students leaving the high school at the end of the day, and I mentioned this, I think, to a couple of you, it's a little concerning when you see students walking in the street, because they can't walk on the sidewalks, because they haven't been cleared. And when you consider the amount of snow that the plows are pushing off the road, where are they pushing the snow? They're pushing it there, which makes it really difficult. So, that is a problem, I think, that we're always, you know, going to be dealing with. And we have suggested some things that we could do as a school system to possibly clear our area, ensure that our area around the schools are as clear as possible when we decide it's okay for everybody to return. So, I don't know if that answers, long-winded response to your, yeah, thank you. I'm glad you mentioned it.
Thank you, Mr. Denon, and Superintendent Mitchell. Excellent. Next item on the agenda, Chairperson's Report, Fiscal Year 2018 Budget Update. Mr. Prigiano, did you want to touch base on any of this? You don't have to, we can wait. Okay. All right. Excellent. No, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Prigiano. Next item on the agenda, Reports of Standing Committees. Payment of Bills. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, we did meet the other night on a 2-0 vote. We did approve payment of the bills in the amount of $1,482,267.89. Mr. Fiorello was absent, and we did, I would make a recommendation, we approved payment of bills.
Mr. Demodica, could you say that amount one more time, please? Mr. Demodica recommends passage for payment of bills in the amount of $1,482,267.89. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, we did get, we did meet again, and we did get an update in regards to where we stand budget-wise at the moment. We're above water, so to speak, and so we'll just keep an eye on that. Healthcare is running favorably at the moment. We also did talk with Mr. Chandler about buying some Chromebooks that we need desperately at the school, and so that's on our agenda down a little bit. And just so everyone's aware, that we're going to need to buy Chromebooks for about three grade levels here pretty soon, to get them on cycle. So, we're going to be looking to find money somewhere along the way to keep Mr. Chandler, you know, with these computers going, so...
Mr. Demodica, how many Chromebooks would we, for those three grades, how many Chromebooks would be?
About 900.
1,000 new Chromebooks? And these are replacing?
Their warranty, aging, the motherboard, things like that, so...
Do we sell the old ones?
I'm not sure.
They junk them? Okay. Okay. All right. Excellent. I happened to run into a company in Boston that buys boards on Chromebooks and laptops, recycles them. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Next item on the agenda, Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update. Mr. Denon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Policy and Procedure Subcommittee met tonight. Chairman Fiorello was not present, so I chaired the meeting tonight. We considered two policies. B2, Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards, and D10, School Committee Approval for Contracts. They're both on the agenda later tonight, but actually, we tabled them tonight in the policy committee, so there'll be no action on those. And they'll come up again at the next policy meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. Next item on the agenda, Achievement and Communication Subcommittee Update. Mr. Denon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Achievement and Communication Subcommittee met earlier this week, and our topic was English Language Learners, or English Learners. We spent, we had a very informative meeting, learning about the efforts the district undertakes to help students who are, whose primary language is not English. That was easy for me to say. One of the most interesting things that we learned was that the district received a grant from RIDE. It's a mini-leadership grant, or, of $45,000 or $44,900, that will be used to train school leaders in this area, in English learners. It's a sizable grant, and it's exciting. It's from RIDE. It's called a mini-grant, but $45,000 is not a mini amount of money. So, actually, we had a great presentation, and one of the things I wanted to share were the number of languages, actually, where is it? 22 different languages are spoken by students who come to our schools, and that's a lot, right? So, we have many staff who are doing great work here, and welcoming these students and getting them to learn English.
You have a list of the languages?
I do not, right here.
Just curious.
Yeah. I'm sure we could get it. So, that was our meeting this past week, and in two weeks, we're meeting with the middle school principals to get an update on some of the changes that's happening at the middle schools. So, that'll happen in two weeks.
Then, an excellent update. That's great news. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Comments from the Public. Rep. McLaughlin, welcome to the meeting. This would be your time. Right to the microphone. Did you want to give an update?
Chairman, members of the school committee, superintendent, it's my privilege to be here tonight, you know, on behalf of the General Assembly.
Love to have you, Jim. You know, Rep. McLaughlin, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Jimmy Mac's fine. You know, basically, I had a brief conversation with the superintendent of schools at the governor's luncheon, and reiterated to me the emphasis on rebuilding our schools, you know, over the next six years. And, you know, I stressed to him, the emphasis should be, you know, on public schools, you know, what we need to do, what we need to accomplish. And he was in total agreement. So, we're going to have a conversation about that. I tried to set up a meeting with him and the representatives and Senator Pearson, you know, and he said, anytime. So, we'll be doing that in the foreseeable future. As far as the General Assembly looks, we have a short-term deficit for this year, and hopefully, you know, we'll get through that. We had projected that in the out-years, probably up until 1819, as you know, the recession, we were the first to go in, and we're the last to come out, you know? Some of the solutions that have been provided by our governor remain to be seen. You've probably heard about the yearly retirement, you know? But if you remember, on pension reform, the whole object of pension reform and keeping the pension system, retiree system solvent, was the ratio. The ratio at that time was probably 1.5 active workers to one retiree. Now, it's just reversed. So, we might be able to plug a hole in a short-term deficit... reversed. So, we might be able to plug a hole in a short-term deficit, but create something elsewhere. Follow what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying. Rep., yes.
So, uh, basically, we'll work it out, but, uh, you know, I, I would urge every member of the School Committee, and I, I know the Superintendent and Chairman, you've all been very vocal, but this year at the State House, you know, to get up there, once, at least once a month, let them know, you know, Cumberland's watching, you know? That's what counts, you know? So, with that said, I, I, earlier you had mentioned the plowing, you know?
Yes.
Well, apparently, I don't know whether you're aware of this, but all over Cumberland, you know, uh, we had eleven employees out at the Town of Raj. I shoveled one mend-and-ride out by hand.
It was a, it, it, was it a virus, a sickness that went through or?
It was a viral thing that happened overnight, but I also notified DOT in reference to the plows, of, uh, just dumping everything on the sidewalks. So, uh, what I've been working on is, uh, and I, in conjunction with the mayor administration, uh, ba- basically what needs to be implemented in Cumberland, oh, Cumberland, okay? Uh, people need to be more responsible, uh, businesses, you know? You have two hundred residents at that one mend-and-ride, you know, high-rise. You've got, what, seventeen hundred children here? I'm looking. These sidewalks need to be cleared, you know? So, an ordinance needs to be preempted. It was tabled the last time, but I'm urging, you know, that an ordinance be passed in reference to at least businesses, schools, gotta be cleared. So, with that said, uh, it's just a brief update. I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Rep., could you, could you allocate an additional million dollars to come our way, and we'll utilize it towards the removal of the snow?
Ah, geez.
Maybe we can build it into a, uh, some kind of, with Mr. Denon, an achievement program of some kind?
Can I write you out an IOU?
Yeah, sure. We already have those from the state.
Uh, no, I'll be doing my best to, you know?
I know you don't.
Try and stop, stay on top of things, but there again, you, you're doing a great job. I look forward to, uh, the meeting Tuesday night. Where is it, uh, Superintendent? Tuesday, you said? Six-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep.
Thank you for having me.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Any other further public comment? Anyone from the audience? Okay. Next item on the agenda, Public Hearing, Reading of Amended Policies. B2 Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards was tabled. Reading of New Policy, First Reading, D10, School Committee Approval for Contracts, was tabled. Mr. Denon?
Yeah, so next up, we have, uh, the second reading of G18 Personnel Record Retention Policy. Um, I believe the first reading for this happened at the last meeting, and this is the, the second meeting, and we have, it's a hearing, so there, if there's anyone here who wants to comment on it, they can.
Walk up to the microphone, state your name, anyone. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Denon. Next item on the agenda, Old Business, Update with Durham School Services Bus Tracking App. Welcome. Uh, no, it was just a reading, Mr. Dematica. Yeah, the vote's coming. Hello, Mr. Nevs?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Enjoyed their time off and got a little bit of rest. That's what we all needed.
Not too much rest, but.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. What we've done is, uh, I provided a folder with three pieces of paper in there about the Durham Tracker system. We have straightened out what we needed to straighten out, so we can go forward, um, predicted day, and this would be, there's some things that have to happen from the School Department also, would be February first. Uh, I think the last page that I, is there, um, is a sample of the parent guardian, uh, letter going out to the students, which would give them the information they need to use Tracker. They have to have the student's, uh, ID number. Each student has to have their ID number, so they can load a, load the app into the system. Um, and, basically, um, the other two sheets, uh, Parents and Guardians, it gives them some, um, instructions, how to get started, and frequently asked questions. Um, the Tracker is a great thing that we've seen working in other areas. Um, the biggest thing is, they'll be able to know where or what the estimated time is that the bus should be at their, uh, uh, their stop, their student's stop. Um, the problem you run into sometimes with the Tracker, and I understand the concerns, the parents, um, if you have, if you have an appointment, and the bus happens to be running late, some, some parents will attempt to get a, get the child off at a prior stop than designated stop for that child. According to our policy, that's, should not be happening, but there are times when it will happen. It can get approved by the office for that to happen. Usually, what we'd like to see on that is if the parent would give us a phone call, just tell us, listen, the bus is running a little bit late, I need to get the student off the bus, then we can do that. That's not a problem. But to put the bus driver into a situation of releasing a student at an undesigned stop for that student is a little bit different, uh, difficult on the driver. Questions?
Are, are students assigned designated stops? I, I don't think I've ever heard that before.
Well, most.
Wondering that also, like, as, how it works, like, the function of it?
My children have never been assigned a bus stop. We just, we're kind of equidistant from, like, three, and we pick one.
So, the bus driver would basically know which stop that you normally go to, and that would be the stop that they'd expect to be releasing the student to. So, if you were going to a totally different stop, say, say maybe not one of those three, maybe it's a, the first stop on the bus, or the, or you weren't gonna make it there, you're gonna go to the last stop, we definitely, well, the last stop wouldn't be a big problem, because then they'd be going back to the school if they didn't get off the bus, and the parents would be able to grab them. But if you're doing it prior to the bus stop, and it wasn't the same person that normally picks them up, that's when we're gonna run into a problem with the bus drivers.
Okay. So, Mr. Nevs, I just wanna make sure I understand this, um, without, I, I didn't pre-read it, and I apologize. So, a parent registers?
Yes.
Download the free app. And on the Durham side, so if, if my daughter gets off at a regular stop on Diamond Hill Road? Then this app will notify me when she gets to that stop?
You're gonna be able to check what time, what time it should be there.
What if she's not on the bus, like, what's?
Well, then you wouldn't be che- you wouldn't be checking the app. If you knew your daughter was not on the bus, or her son was not on the bus.
But, but work with me on what the, what the?
It tracks the bus.
It tracks the, exactly. Yeah, so, so it tracks the bus, it doesn't, it's not?
Doesn't track the child, no.
Okay.
The only reason that, the only reason the student number has to be, uh, to the parents, and the parents have to know that, is so they know the parent, the parent can only track their student's bus and where it's proceeding.
Mr. Denon?
So, they're tracking the whole route. They're not tracking this, their specific stop, because nobody's assigned a specific stop.
Well, they're tracking as the, the bus is progressing through the stops, correct.
Okay. Mr. Dematica? Oh, I apologize, Mr. Hess.
So, just a quick question, for parents that have multiple children in multiple different schools?
Yes.
This understands that, would allow them to track that many buses?
Correct. With, with the student ID number, because each student would have a different ID number?
Right.
They'd be able to track each, to each bus.
Okay, all right. So, they don't need separate sign-ins or anything like that? They just enter in however many IDs they have, and that lets them track that many buses? Okay, thank you. Mr. Dematica?
Couple of questions, Paul. One is, um, are we gonna set this up so that the School Committee can see it actually working in place before we give it to the public?
A demo?
We can definitely do a demo for you. I could probably have that set up for the next meeting.
And the other question is, is, what are we gonna do? Uh, what is the policy in place if you have parents who are separated? There's an issue where one parent has custody and the other one doesn't. How do we put, make sure that that other parent is shut off? How's that, how's that gonna work?
It's actually, the only way to be able to do it is to have, the, the parent needs the student ID number to track the bus and what time it's coming at. Okay? If both parents have that, then both parents are gonna be able to do that. There's no, you know, there's no set in the system to stop one of the parents from doing that.
I have an issue with that. I think that if both parents have the number today, and tomorrow they're separated and someone has custody of that child, then you may not want the other parent to know where their child is on their bus routes.
But that, that has to be, I would think, court-ordered, that that parent is not allowed.
If there's a court order, fine. And how do we ensure that that court order is followed through on this bus? That, that's been my biggest concern with this bus route.
It would have to be the other parent's responsibility to tell the school. Mrs. Goggins?
Well, I mean, the bus routes are published. Anybody can see them, so even without an app, they can track where the bus is going. They just might not have the exact minute. Isn't that true?
True.
Mr. Hess?
I was just gonna back up what Mrs. Goggins is saying. I mean, th- this is a, perhaps a more accurate, more real-time, but everybody knows where the buses are. It's all public information. So, if I wanted to know where a child was, I could find out where the bus is supposed to be and follow it from there. Um, so I, I, I don't, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think this is as big of a security issue as it might seem, because they are public, uh, information. This is just, uh, essentially giving us information if there's a delay of some kind.
I can just add one thing to your, to your point. If there is some type of a separation and court custody issue, there is a way that we can get notification, notification through the courts, and the court, the parent has to do it, not to release to a certain individual, either parent. We have to have that documentation, because we cannot refuse to, a pa- a student to a parent without having that documentation. I mean, we don't, we don't have that happen quite often, I can tell you that much, but we have had issues like that.
Is this, is, so if there's cameras on the bus, does this app tie into the camera?
No, this app does not tie into the cameras.
If, so if the bus is broken down on the side of the road, this app would reflect?
It's through our GPS, it will tell where the, where the bus is at that particular time.
All right, thank you. Glad to see this coming to town. Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Maybe cut down on paper and double-sign, print, but.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, is, I, I apologize, I lost my spot on here. All right, s- s- yep. CHS Theater, Northeast Theater Festival, Portland, Maine. Mr. Mitchell?
As, as you may recall, Mr. DiMartino was here, um, I would say about a month or so ago, and, and I know that there were just a few questions about this particular field trip. I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the, 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 the major concern was transportation, and Mr. DiMartino is gonna be here to, um, provide us with the information as to where we are, um, with this particular field trip.
Welcome, Mr. DiMartino. Happy New Year to you.
I, uh, was fortunate enough to, uh, be able to find a school from New Jersey that is traveling up to the festival in a, in, in a coach bus, and they had seats available, and they were traveling close enough to Cumberland to pick us up right in front of the high school. Uh, the name of the bus company is Stouts Transportation in New Jersey. Their website is stoutstransportation.com. They seem to have a excellent, uh, safety record. The name of the school is, um, Tom's River North from New Jersey.
I'm familiar with Tom's River, area in New Jersey, yeah.
It's a beautiful area, I understand.
It is. It's off the beaten path.
It is. And, as a matter of fact, they're gonna be leaving there at, like, three in the afternoon, and they're probably gonna be eating dinner before they pick us up. They'll probably be picking us up at about eight in the evening. So, but we did find what I hope is adequate for the committee's approval.
We're gonna go on the recommendation of the Superintendent, Mr. Mitchell. I don't, I don't see a problem.
I, 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 I just, I can't see how we would not take advantage of this opportunity. I mean, I, I think it's, um, I think Mr. DiMartino was pretty resourceful in finding this transportation and piggybacking on, on another, um, school system's bus, I, I think is a, is a really good idea.
I think, I think the kids will probably enjoy it better. It's a coach, more comfortable.
As a matter of fact, we're in the process of doing, uh, of putting up the show Addams Family, the musical, and so is Tom's River North. So, they're gonna be looking for their counterparts on the bus.
Excellent. I like that. Excellent. Uh, any committee member, any questions? Excellent. So, I believe we already passed this on the stipulation of this item being corrected, so have a great trip.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Break a, break a leg. Next item on the agenda, New Business, Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Resolution SCPR one dash one dash two thousand eighteen dash zero one, Purchase of Chromebooks. Mr. Dematica, did you want to speak anymore about this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is for a purchase of seventy-five Chromebooks in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. They'll be used in the school district. They're needed to, for replacements that we, uh, sorely need right now. It did pass upstairs in the two to zero vote. It is budgeted, and I would move passage.
Thank you. Mr. Dematica? Mr. Dematica, who is the company that we're getting these?
Sorry, it's CDW Government of, uh, two thirty North Milwaukee Avenue, Vernon Hills, Illinois. And this is the vendor we have used in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Dematica. Mr. Dematica recommends passage of, a motion to recommend passage of the SCPR one, two thousand eighteen dash zero one. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman, all in favor? Against? The eyes have it, six, zero. Excellent. Looking forward to the new Chromebooks coming in. Next item on the agenda, uh, section B in B was tabled, Mr. Denon, correct? Uh, and then you can, you wanna take the C?
So, again, this was, we had a second reading of this policy, um, earlier this evening. This is G18 Personnel Record Retention. Um, so we're looking for, actually, um, I don't, I don't have the record, but I believe this passed three, nothing in policy. It was either two, nothing, or three, nothing, but I believe it was unanimous. Um, and I make a motion, we pass it.
So, Mr. Denon recommends a motion to pass G18 Personnel Record Retention. Any further discussion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dematica, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you. And the next item, D, I believe, was tabled, Mr. Denon, correct?
Correct. We tabled that this evening in, uh, Policy and Procedure Subcommittee.
Mr. Denon. Mr. Fiorlo will be proud of you, such a good update. Next item on the agenda, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Mitchell, do we have any?
Excuse me. Yes, uh, we do. Mr. Chairman, I actually have, I have two leaves of absence and one appointment, if I may.
Okay.
I request, uh, the advice and consent of the School Committee on the FMLA Leave of Absence of Christine Carpenter, Secondary Special Education Teacher at McCourt Middle School, with an anticipated date of April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, and an anticipated return date of May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Mitchell is recommending, recommending passage for the FML Leave of Christine Carpenter to have a motion. Mr. Dematica makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon, all in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next.
You. I request the advice and consent of the School Committee on the FMLA Leave of Absence of Jessica Ramillard, Secondary Mathematics Teacher at Cumberland High School, with an anticipated date of March fifth, two thousand eighteen, and an anticipated return date of June fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Looking for a motion to pass the FML Leave of Jessica Ramillard. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Dematica and Mr. Motion by Mr. Dematica and Mr. Hess. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Goggins, I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, 6-0. Next item, thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
I have one more.
Oh, excellent.
And it's an appointment.
Okay.
I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of Nick Mendello, secondary English teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, with an effective date of January 2, 2018.
Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve the appointment of Nick Mendello. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dematica and Mrs. Goggins? I'm sorry, Mrs. Friedman. I'm, I have to say, I am partially deaf in the right ear from working at the restaurant, so. All in favor? Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Next item on, so that's it, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Anyone from the committee would like to speak? Mrs. Friedman?
Tuesday night at North Cumberland Middle School, they had the parent teacher conferences, and the Blackstone Valley Prevention Coalition had the hidden in plain sight, which was the first time that I had seen that. And I was shocked and horrified by how much I don't know. And they did an excellent job. And you could come and go, and I learned things that, that I wish I didn't have to learn, but what's happening today. And, and it's even important for our kids to know some of this, so that if they go to someone's house and they're offered a gummy bear, maybe it's not what it seems. And, and the whole vaping thing and all of that, so I highly recommend people to go to the event on the 16th in, indefinitely, this hidden in plain sight. And then I went home and I followed and liked the Blackstone Valley Prevention Coalition page on Facebook, and signed up for their newsletter, because there's a lot of information that as parents, you know, mother of an eighth grader and a 10th grader, we should know these things. So that was a great service that they provided during the parent teacher conference.
Thank you. Mrs. Friedman? Anyone else? Mr. Denon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I received via email are minutes from other committees, so that's kind of what a nerd I am, I read minutes from other committees. But today, something came in from Blackstone Valley Prep that I wanted to share with everyone at a, at a meeting back in October, so the minutes just came out today. But a meeting back in October, they considered, actually, I should step back. You know how when we hire people, we have to make sure they're certified, right? There's a certification process that employees, or potential employees have to go through, and superintendent is one of those. So Mr. Mitchell has a certification. I'm sure it has a begin date and an end date, and you get, you may have to renew it, or however that works. But we can't hire a superintendent who's not certified. What BVP, what the Board of BVP recently did was they approved a request for a waiver. So any future superintendent they hire, they have no immediate need for a superintendent, but any future superintendent they hire with this waiver does not need to be certified. And they, they did this to expand the pool of applicants, which you might imagine, and get what I think it said in the minutes, a better candidate, a potentially better candidate. So the reason I'm bringing this up is that we are always compared to BVP. We always hear, why can't you be more like BVP? But here they are, changing the rules, right? They're not, they're not going by our rules. And that just kind of rubbed me the wrong way, I have to say. And I wanted to share it. So on that, on the board, we have our mayor, who is on the board, and to his credit, he was the only one who voted against this. He brought up concerns that this would kind of further the divide between traditional schools and charter schools. So the vote was 8 to 1. That means everyone else who voted, voted for it, but kudos to Mayor Bill Murray, because he voted against it. He saw kind of the problems it could cause, because I think it sends the wrong message. I think charter schools were supposed to be models for us to follow, models as traditional schools to follow. If the model is you break the rules, I'm not sure how that scales to help us at all. And I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Mr. Denon, excellent. I'm glad you brought that to this committee's attention.
Chairman.
Mr. Dematica?
Do we know if RIDE has given them that waiver yet?
I don't know. According to the minutes, it sounded like they request the waiver, and it gets approved, and they wanted to get it approved before they go for renewal. So the answer is, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the superintendent's office to make that inquiry with RIDE to see if they actually approve that? I mean, if they haven't approved it yet, I would like to see the school committee send a resolution to RIDE against it. We should have a licensed superintendent in every school that we're paying taxpayer dollars for.
I can ask the superintendent if he would want to take that on, to your discretion.
Certainly, I mean, I can ask around.
And I just want to add, too, that it also says in the minutes that they could, even if they get this waiver, so whether it's approved or not, they can still, any candidate that they see, they could require that person to be certified. So I understand what they're doing, and I understand that they want the best candidate possible. What sort of bothered me was the changing of the rules. And whether they end up with a certified candidate, a certified superintendent or not, it's this part that really bothered me, sort of, you know, because we're held to the same standard, or in some, some cases, a higher standard. And we can't compete like that if the rules aren't the same.
Thank you, Mr. Denon. Mr. Pregano, you could apply over there, superintendent.
I could too.
Yeah?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
And just, I know that the committee is well aware of this, but we have had non, people who've lost their certification because it's expired, people have lost their jobs because of it. So it just, it just doesn't seem fair to me.
Rep, yes, come on up to the microphone. We're going to, we're going to fit you in.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
From the school committee, if I could just add to the conversation in reference that it would be of any assistance, Andy is my liaison to RIDE, and, you know, I could actually get, get an answer from RIDE.
Rep, that would be great. Maybe you could reach out to Mr. Dematica?
Expediently, to the superintendent.
That's fine.
And also, you know, this is just one of the many violations that have transpired over the years, so, you know, I would also urge the superintendent of schools and all superintendents to totally reject this, you know. Everybody has to be certified, you know, and it's ludicrous. With that said, I failed to mention tonight, I would like to get a resolution from the Cumberland School Department in reference to the bond issue that we'll be coming out to rebuild our schools.
Okay.
I'd like to be ahead of the spear.
I agree. Would you like to submit something to us, and then we can?
If this Cumberland School Committee could put forth a resolution, draft it, you know, and.
I'll give you a call.
And I will submit it, so we can be ahead of the spear and just let, you know, people know that Cumberland is, like many other cities and towns, are looking forward to this much badly needed, you know, revitalization of our schools. The top three priorities at the General Assembly this year will be, number one, the schools, and the phasing out of the car tax, you know. So, there's three priorities, but these two are most important. So with that said, I will have an answer for the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Mr. Denon?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to something Ms. McLaughlin said. I want to make it clear, they didn't break any rules here. They're legally allowed to ask for this waiver, so it's a, it's a rule passed by the General Assembly that allows them to. Does that make sense?
A lot of the recommendations.
Okay.
Mr. Denon's pointing out is that BVP and the public schools are playing by two different sets of rules. And so clearly, that's not, not fair. If I can, just in the comment section, so Mr. Dematica, Mr. Fiorello, and I attended a workshop in late December with the general treasurer, going over the plans for the school improvement. And I believe it's $1.8 billion over 10 years, if the numbers are accurate. It's about a billion in bonded indebtedness, and then another 800 million over the course of the 10 years, that they're hoping to invest into the schools. Now, as we stand right now, I believe the estimate's just over $2 billion in today's dollars, 2.4 billion in today's dollars, to bring the schools up to stuff. So certainly, that doesn't answer all of it, but that's certainly a large pile of cash and could do a lot of good. And I certainly hope that Cumberland will be in a position in the coming years to take advantage of that, because the state will be picking up a large portion of that. So I certainly hope that town will be in a position to, to take advantage of that. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the problems that we had with the snowstorm and the sidewalks, and echo Rep. McLaughlin's comments, that clearly, we need to do something about the sidewalks in town. This is not a pedestrian-friendly town. We don't have enough sidewalks, and we have difficulty keeping the sidewalks clear. And while we can ask the town to do a better job of the sidewalks that it's responsible for, and we can do our part, there are miles and miles of sidewalks that we are not responsible for as a town, that must be cleared for the children to safely get to school. And I would ask that the town council and the mayor look at that and do what's right to ensure that not only our students, but the other residents in town that rely on those sidewalks can safely traverse town in the winter months. It's not as though snow is an unusual event in Cumberland. It shouldn't be that people can't get around just because it snowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. From what I, so to touch base on that a little bit, from what I understand is, we do have, the town does have a machine that goes on the sidewalks, but there's only two people that know how to use it. So, yeah. I mean, that's not for us to decide, but that's for them, but that's what I'm being told is, you know, one or two people. Mr. Pregano, am I, are you familiar with that? Okay, yeah. It's the same guy, I think. Yeah. Okay, excellent. Anyone else? That's it? Next item, I'm sorry, Mr. Denon? Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to adjourn. I was actually hoping it would be Mr. Hess filling in for Mr. Fiorello. That's okay. Mr. Hess, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.